Wow.
Or you could just come back to yourself, since you're the one. Well, we're staffed.
I think so.
Are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
William Clevenger.
What's up?
Bill Giffins.
Here.
Jenny Monroe.
Here.
Sally Rettardy.
Here.
Did you hear the roll call, Sally?
Yeah, apparently you can't hear me.
Okay, Sally, are you there now?
I'm here, I'm here.
Thanks.
Great, thank you, thank you. Somebody's on the phone. We'll skip the pledge of allegiance and lieu of not having a flag. I go on to approval of minutes.
Approval of the December 8th executive session and regular minutes, as well as the December 16th work session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call? Or do we just do it for Sally?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Next, we have approval of the November financial reports. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have.
One.
Are you meeting these people? Yeah. For those who are on the phone, the meeting is included, so just a reminder that if you participate in the meeting, you're giving your permission to participate and to be reported. Okay, and if you are on the phone and you are not muted, please mute yourself, because we're getting a lot of background noise here, so if you're on a cellphone or on the call, mute yourself, thank you. First on the agenda is EMT staffing. We had the work session last week on this, and Jeff had proposed hiring another full-time employee, and we discussed it at quite some length in the work session. Are there any further discussion points about this, or comments, or questions for Jeff? Or any motions to that effect based on discussion in the meeting?
I move that we approve the four full-time employees. One second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Roll call? Sorry.
And you're fine. Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
All right, thank you. We also discussed at that work session holiday incentive pay for five specific holidays that we would be willing to pay a time and a half to an EMT or other employee to work on those specific five holidays, which I believe are the day before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Eve, no, Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, New Year's Day. Did I get that right?
Thanksgiving, day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas, New Year's Day.
Okay.
And I put that wording that we had talked about at that work session in the salary ordinance, and then if you all approve it, tonight we'll add it to the personal policy menu. So you'll be able to approve this in the salary ordinance when we do that part of the meeting.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve of that new policy for holiday pay?
So moved.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay. So next, we have the third reading of ordinance 2020-012, which is the 2021 salary ordinance, which is now at the stage we can finally approve on third read.
And we need to, because the deadline is next week. I did provide a copy of the updated ordinance, adding the third full-time, the fourth full-time percent. Make sure the range is all correct, and then also provided a copy of pay rate.
Okay. Any questions for Karen on the updates, most of which we discussed at the work session? Motion to approve on third read?
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye, I didn't hear anybody call me.
Sorry. I'll data.
All right, next we have revised stormwater rate study.
Yeah, I have a quick update on that. I sent that out to everyone with the changes I talked about at the last meeting, trying to reduce that rate a little bit and taking off the beach lodge project, trying to be able to plan for replacing or repairing one to two manholes each year. And so with those changes to the capital plan, the recommended rate is $3.50 per residence, and currently we're at $2 per residence. And I think the recommendation when Jeff was here from Baker Tilly was maybe look at doing that over three phases, so again, I would follow and look to do that same thing as he recommended, move from $2 to $3.50 over a course of three different phases. I would recommend at least six months between them, I don't know if council would prefer to go a little bit longer, and I think that might be okay too. When we did water and sewer last time, Karen, do you remember how far apart they were?
I want to say they were six months apart.
Six.
But it was a more significant increase.
Yeah, we had the water plant project going on at the time, and the SRF one.
So all I'm looking for tonight would be a motion to approve the study as presented, and then any feedback or to go ahead and authorize me to draft a new stormwater fee ordinance that we could look at in January.
Sure, that would require the public hearing then at that stage, right? Okay. Motion to approve, to authorize Jonathan to get that going?
I have a question before, is the motion been made?
No, go ahead.
I have a question, though. I looked this over, and I don't tend to be an expert by any means, but I would like to see a study as to where we might save some money, rather than raise the rates right now.
Specifically to stormwater or to utilities in general?
Stormwater, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Because our stormwater is actually, from what the study, from what Baker Tilly said, is actually a very low rate compared to the rest of the state, because I think we were only at, was it a dollar?
We were at $2, which we've been at since the stormwater.
And suction of it.
Yeah, and I think the average around this is on that back page. I think the lowest one they found was Nephany at $1.95, going up to kind of in our area. Their, yeah, state average was $5.62, and council was the highest on their chart at $8.50. I think, I guess where I would struggle with that bill is I feel like we're already subsidizing that utility with some of the other utilities and general revenue, general taxes. I think, as I mentioned two meetings ago, there's equipment we purchased and some manpower that we really don't account for out of the stormwater utility, and I'd just really like to get us closer to having a budget that's reflective of what we're really doing at stormwater. And then, at the rates we are right now, it took us, you know, we generate about 28,000 a year, I think. The match we just did on that project on the south end of town was, you know, I think 75,000 range, so you're looking at, you know, three to four years just to generate, if that was the only thing you did and didn't have ongoing maintenance costs, just a match for that. And I think there is need in that study showing, like on Plymouth Street, for possible future expansion there, improvements, and I'm sure Bob could give us a list of several other locations that weren't on that original study a decade ago. I think he and I were on West Shore last Friday, dealing with a stormwater complaint from a resident. Hopefully, they're able to get that figured out privately, but, I mean, we get those calls all the time. I don't know, I think phasing it in over time is a good idea, and maybe you could trim that a little bit, but I don't know how you can cut a rate that's already, you know, one of the lowest in the region, and look at that as a real positive, you know, step forward.
I just could comment on that, too. I think, as we went through the work session on, and we talked about this, I think we did lower the number from where it was initially, I think it was $4.
It was over four, I think it was.
We reduced some of the capital costs, the protection going forward.
Yeah, taking out the park project lowered that, so we've cut it by a dollar. So we'd be going from $2 to $3.50? A $1.50 over, say, 50 cents every six months to get to the $3.50?
I'd recommend we do it over a 12-month period of time, in increments of yearly increase of 50 cents, rather than just two in one year and then another one, I'd say 50 cents a year for the next three years.
I think that's fine.
That's my recommendation. And I would make that amendment when there's a motion for, and we'll see how the motion goes.
Yeah, I think right now we just need a motion to approve the study as presented, so that we can set up a public hearing in January, because if we're going to do anything with the rates, we have to have a public hearing.
And we can talk about the timeframe then.
Yep, yep, we don't have to make that decision tonight.
Okay, well, then I will make a motion, but we go ahead and approve the rate study.
Second, then we'll.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Clevenger.
Thanks.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Four, four in support, one against.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Winterfest special event permit request, so I'll turn that over to Jonathan.
Yep, and I think Liz and Tony are both here from the chamber. The event would be held on February 13th and 14th. Some of the changes they were looking at this year included not having the outdoor beer garden or the ice fights at the depot, and they'd like to do ice sculptures on location at various businesses in town, rather than, rather than all at the park. The final location list won't be finalized until January of where all those would go. They'd be using the beach lodge for the polar plunge and setting up a sledding hill in the park, it's happened in the past, and I just had the one note from Amber about having the organizers move the picnic tables back under the pavilion after the event, and that if it does move forward, that we would require a written notice from the health department that they're comfortable with the event as planned, and then because it'll involve use of the beach lodge, and it's a multi-day event, my recommendation would be that we do ask for the $100 special event fee as part of that, so those were my notes on it, and then Liz or Tony, if you guys want to add anything.
I mean, we're here, we're here prepared to answer any questions if anybody has any. Pretty similar to last year's, just made some changes to make sure things stay spread out and not so collected in the park area, so we're happy to answer any questions, whoever has any.
Okay, any questions from council? Sally, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, so I'll make that, first motion from Bill Giffins, seconded by Sally, and roll call?
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Resolution 2020-010, which is transferring funds within departments and within funds, and this is something we do on an annual basis.
It is, this is the tie and bow on the end of the year type of thing. There are a number of line items within each of the budgets that are in the negative, but there is sufficient funds within that department budget to cover everything, and so this is just an exercise in moving that money around. It doesn't go anywhere other than within that budget, so if you could approve that, I will move ahead and start wrapping up the year.
All right, motion to approve Resolution 2020-010.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
All right, similar to the resolution, we have ordinance 2020-013 for incumbent funds.
I have three requests for incumbent, incumbences. The first one is from the tree commission for $156.33, it's for invoice, that's a total of $300, I believe, for Luthers Tree Service, and I believe that work has been done, but the invoice is dated for 1/1/2021. The police department for 2007, 87, 86, for Central Square, this is part of the CAD system and the dispatch that Wayne has talked to you about previously, he has some extra funds, so if we can cover that, his 2021 budget won't take a hit. And then finally, the fire department voted, the members of the fire department voted to use any extra funds in their budget towards the purchase of gear, and so they have a quote from Phoenix Safety Outfitter, and they have $20,736.30 left in their budget, so they're going to go, if you approve the incumbences, they'll go ahead and purchase.
I know they were spreading that, is this technically for uniforms, or?
It's for the turnout gear.
Okay.
That are significant for each, I think they changed course a little bit, and then start purchasing.
Okay. Any other questions from council, or Sally? Have a motion to approve the incumbences? Yep.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Roll call, sorry.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and pass on second and third read?
So moved.
Roll call?
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
West.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have contracts, and I assume that one of these is Mr. Clevenger's. Did you all get a copy of Clevenger's contract?
This is the.
No, there's a number of contracts.
No, I didn't go to.
We emailed it out.
Yeah, it went out on email. Right after the last meeting?
The next day.
Jen, do you want to fill everyone in on the contract?
Sure, I don't know why I'm not on video tonight, but had some trouble right off the bat. The contract really is pretty much identical to the previous year. It sets out that I'll attend the 24 regular session meetings, and I'd be happy and actually prefer to be in there in person rather than by a team, but that's the way we are. And there's a compensation level, sort of as a retainer, for miscellaneous minor duties at $4,800, paid in quarterly installments of $1,200. The other activities, legal services provided, are at a discounted hourly rate of $150 an hour. If there are special litigation projects, bond issues, securing funding, some of those kinds of things, the contract provides that that would be paid on my normal hourly rate, which is more than $150 an hour. And certainly, term is contemplated for a year, but, you know, if there's a need or if there's any problems along the way, both parties need to be comfortable with their counsel, and so those would be addressed.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions from council? Questions to approve? Roll call? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jim. Let's see, where am I?
For fire services, we're not even to them, I are probably doing a bunch of fire departments. If it proves out, he's already.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor, oops, sorry, roll call?
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay. Next, we move on to nepotism certification. Karen's got that before all of you.
Yes, everyone's provided them, except for Sally, so you get to see her, but I'm assuming that she's fine, it just needs to be recorded in the minutes that everyone's turned that in.
Okay. Do you need a motion to approve of that? I didn't think so, it's just something, you know, we have to do.
Yep.
So take care of that before you leave tonight, please. Regional stellar plan update? I don't have any news, new updates, other than we have our next meeting in January. Jonathan, do you have any further updates, message board is status quo as of now?
Yep, I just had one, and we have a proposal from Troyer Group for professional services for Slate and Jefferson Street Trail. The total design contract is for $112,475. That includes land survey, environmental review, historical preservation review, because it'll go through part of our downtown or touch part of the downtown, right-of-way engineering and plan development, and so the town's match on that contract would be $22,495, and that was something that was taken to CRC, and they approved that part of the town match for this contract. So tonight I just asked for a motion to approve that N dot LPA consulting contract with Troyer Group, and I would ask Jenny to abstain from that.
Of course.
Well, we didn't have a motion to approve the contract?
I can't do it. I'm not even going to call on it.
You have a motion to approve the contract with Troyer Group?
I think it's an N dot LPA contract with Troyer Group.
Yeah, N dot LPA consulting contract with Troyer Group. That motion, I'll second it.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
And Mrs. Monroe abstained.
Yep.
That's all I have for regional.
Stellar plan update?
Just a reminder that N dot will be accepting bids on two projects for us in January, State Road 10 sidewalks and West Jefferson Gateway, so those contract documents are available for interested contractors on the N dot website, and then we also have.
That was for State Road 10?
State Road 10 and West Jefferson, yep. Another two contracts, then, this will be construction inspection on those two projects, and again, you know, we went through a procurement process, it's been a couple of years ago now, for all the services that will be provided on those two, and now as it gets to construction, we're ready for the construction inspection contract, and again, that would be with Troyer Group. That one is a, there's a cap fee at 12.5% of the construction cost, so based on what we budgeted for construction cost, that's $26,000 for State Road 10, and a separate contract of $80,000 for West Jefferson Gateway. Now, if they actually, if the inspector uses, is out there less, they have a specific hourly rate on this one, and they do actually just bill us the hour, so if they don't use it all, we don't give a bill for it, so those are not-to-exceed numbers, basically.
Okay.
And so, yes, my request then would be a motion to approve the LPA consulting contract with Troyer Group for West Jefferson Gateway and State Road 10 sidewalks.
It's a move. I'll second.
I'm staying.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe abstained.
Anything else on stellar plan update for us? We pretty much just down to trail set this.
Just down to N dot projects, yep.
And of course, the housing project's still in works. Okay. Town managers report?
The P and B paving work on Davidson Main Streets is substantially complete, there's a little landscaping work they'll need to come back and do in the spring, and the subcontractor has notified us in writing, and we've got an okay from the adjacent property owner about the damaged new wall, but they're going to take care of that in the spring as well, so we've got that final invoice on the list for approval tonight. I think that's all on utilities. Then, police overtime, at the beginning of the year when we had two officers resign right back-to-back, in ordinance 2020-002, the council approved a temporary stipend for the town marshal of $41.21 per hour, for hours worked over 84 hours in a two-week period, which was basically our way of incorporating some sort of an overtime pay for the town marshal, as he basically became two employees at the same time for most of the year this year. Good news is we've started to season life at the end of tunnel, hired two new officers, but I would suggest that we go ahead and extend that provision for another 90 days until the end of March, until March 30th, 2021, and in that ordinance, it was stated that it could be extended by a motion of the council.
I would move that we extend the ordinance 2020-002 with a expiration date of March 30th, 2021.
So there you go.
Roll call?
Is that March 30th?
Yes.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Giffins.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Ms. Rettardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor.
So, since that's just an extension of something we did three reads on, we don't have to go through another round of, okay.
Just an update, Cheryl Morphew will be presenting to the council in January on the use of economic incentives, and then she's also working on a proposal for us to consider, to continue her economic development consulting work into next year. And then uh, she's also working on a proposal for us to consider uh, to continue her economic development consulting work into next year. Hopefully we'll have that for you, I believe at the first meeting in January.
Yeah. So are we doing a, doing it as a work session then, before the next regular meeting?
I think that, that was the idea, right?
You guys okay with a, a work session before the regular meeting? We'll probably forget about it between now and January, but one must still remind the council.
I think five o'clock is what she asked.
Yeah, I think she thought an hour would be enough. Five o'clock, does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
January 12th work session.
Okay, what day?
Uh, January 12th at five o'clock.
Second January.
First January meeting.
January 12th.
And that's the uh, economic development consultant that met with uh, several key stakeholders and organizations through those three sessions. I think all of you participated in at least one of those. But she wanted to meet with the council as well to deep dive on incentives. Okay, go ahead.
Yep, uh, we had a demolition order for 709 of this boat that became effective December 11th. However, just as that was about to take effect, um, we did start to see some work happening there. And Chuck was able to inspect the house previously and see if they're making some progress. I believe uh, Jim Clevenger spoke with them and I also had a phone call with them today. And uh, the property owner asked me to stop by and they actually were, uh, a subcontractor was there ordering windows and or measuring for windows. And um, they had completely gutted the inside and you could see some work was actually taking place, so um, good to see some progress there. So obviously we're not opening demolition bits tonight. Uh, they had an active building permit on it and I, I don't know if Jim has anything else he wanted to add with that, but I was comfortable with giving them some more time now that they're seeing some.
All right, Jonathan, I just jump in. I sent an email to you and I think I copied the council as to my conversation with the, the contractor. He, he was trying to get a thing, get it painted and the windows in right away and thought that that would spruce it up some and then re-ruff it early spring and thought that might get it, the job done. So you all have to tell me whether that will or will not.
Okay. I appreciate that you checked that out in person, by the way.
And, and Chuck's talking to Chuck and being in there, um, it did seem like the majority of the homes were repairable and uh, that as long as they're moving forward with those windows and um, working on the outside, getting it sealed up, um, I was comfortable. And I, I did, Jim, I'd like to see an updated timeline from him, but as long as they're making some progress, I think that's good.
Any questions on that, you guys? All right.
And the last thing I had was a discussion on a CRC slash town council pitch night. This is something I think uh, Matt Keaty at the Visitor Center had suggested to a few of us and um, kind of went through some different ideas and ended up with this. Uh, I sent you basically kind of an outline of how I think it could work, what a one-page, simple application might look like. Presented it to CRC last night and they were supportive of providing half the funding if the council was also interested in doing the same, uh, up to $5,000. The general idea is to um, do a, a pitch night that would be open to small businesses in Culver. And we would look at ideas that they'd like to see funded, that Redevelopment Commission could fund or the council could fund. So things like uh, some outdoor furniture, light displays, um, I had a longer list to think on here. And, and it could be purchases, it could be leases, seasonal light displays, fire pits, warming stations, public art, seasonal outdoor market equipment or furniture, basically any other purchases designed to encourage people to, to visit commercial areas safely in the winter months and um, allow our businesses a kind of a, an option that they don't have right now to encourage people to shop local here in Culver during what should, what looks like it's gonna be some challenging months in uh, January, February and March. So we look for, I mean, we have a review committee and we look for options that could be done quickly, um, that we could roll out very quickly. And uh, we look for a council member, a Redevelopment Commission member. I think someone from Main Street, uh, the chamber board, um, I'd be willing to be on it, maybe a youth participant from the high school, something like that. Put together a voting panel that would listen to these pitches, uh, review the grant app or the application and then make a decision uh, mid to late January and get the project rolling. That's, that's kind of the idea of the request from council would be to match that 5,000 that redevelopment committed. Take any questions?
That 5,000 can match her.
I, I believe the way the redevelopment.
I mean, is our limit, is $2,500, is there $2,500 dollars to reach idea?
So the request was $5,000 from council and 5,000 from redevelopment. And I don't think I set a, a specific limit on a particular project. I think I, I suggested 5,000 as a maximum, but I, that 500 to 5,000 range is an idea.
So they could pitch a $500 idea or they might pitch a $2,500 idea, but.
And it's.
Sounds like it would depend on which ones. You know, they might invest in five of them, they might invest in 10 of them if they were all a thousand bucks a piece.
What's our maximum exposure as a council?
Five.
The redevelopment, we just said they would match whatever the, like the 5,000, whatever the council.
5,000 per entity.
Per entity, yes. I'm all for it. I, I'm wondering if, does it have to only be a business that pitches though? Like what if Karen has a great idea to pitch that, I mean, is it, and do you, I know you don't want to have 200 people pitching, obviously that could get out of hand, but.
I mean, my thought was that um, if Karen wanted to pitch, that if she would contact a business and work with them, like Karen could do the pitch, but we'd like to see at least that you've had a conversation with the business and they felt supportive of that application. That's kind of where I was headed with it.
Okay. Yes, which I totally agree with. You fund whatever good ideas come out of it, but you know, Karen might have a fantastic idea that Divas didn't think of or whatever. I guess is what I'm getting at.
Does the business have any skin in the game?
Uh, I don't think the way I put it in there right now, a match would be required. I think I said it was encouraged, but not required. And that's.
I have a, this is a general question and I, I understand what you're, what's trying to be accepted here. Usually less frequently is it, you think, uh, I'm somewhat doubtful, but um, it's gonna do much to enhance. I mean, yes, you have new things and so forth, but if the intent and purpose is to draw people downtown and so forth, I'm dubious if this is gonna make a big difference. Who's gonna come downtown?
Yeah, I mean, I think the general idea is just, um, especially this year, uh, I, I think warming and outdoor furniture stuff would probably, you know, be my first thought is that uh, we're, a lot of people, in order for businesses to really operate, they're gonna be asking people to do things outside in the cold that we haven't really done before. So I think anything that would support that, uh, I think could help. It's kind of new territory. I agree with you. There's a little bit of risk involved. And um, part of it, we're kind of counting on residents and businesses to get creative and, and think of some good ideas. And if we would approve a maximum and do it and there's not, you know, nothing comes of it, I guess we don't have to fund a terrible idea. The idea would be to have that board them or have this group kind of review those and come up with a good plan.
And it seems like that the pitch itself could generate some marketing exposure to the community. People get excited about that sort of thing. It can be a fun. Uh, I know from all the Main Street conferences I've gone to and some of the AIM stuff, this is one also, another, another pitch night idea is entrepreneurs come in and pitch a business and they get some financial support to launch that business in your downtown area. But the, the pitch itself generates a lot of excitement and interest that could also help market the businesses during a really rough season of the year. That's just my gut based on sitting through a bunch of conferences.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Jenny. I'm just, they can more or less, let them make the pitch and then we come up with a dollar amount later based on the pitches that are made. Almost like you got the party before the horse.
I think what, I think what Jonathan is suggesting here is it was a pool of money that's used for that. And again, it's instead of there, a lot of ideas are not gonna fund, a lot of ideas. It, it's also, because we talked about the redevelopment, it's more than just a, in the capital, it could be a process, it could be an event. Could be a process improvement of some type.
And it's a collaborative group of judges, Bill, making up, making a decision of whether that idea would work, not the town council. So it's not where, okay, you go have a pitch night and then they bring their 10 winning ideas to the council, we decide what we're gonna invest. It's saying, we trust these organizations in this collaborative sort of event for them to make the decisions about what would work for getting people to downtown Culver in the winter months. So to me, it's if we say, oh, well, come back to us with your ideas later, that's um, really us saying, we want to make the decisions, the five of us, instead of, you see what I'm getting at?
All we're doing is agreeing on the money part. I mean, you got a moving panel that's gonna be making the pitches, you know, based on that, you know.
I think there's an opportunity to, to actually contest whatever we want to call it itself, being a marketing. I mean, I think we discovered we get some interest from multiple, uh, for the private communities, although they would probably be interested. Maybe some TV stations, some radio stations, you know, if they hear something like this, you know, would be interested in coming in and doing like a, a mini, where about it? If it's a uniquely created idea, both the outcome and the process itself, the, the talent, the Redevelopment Commission, by funding something to help our local businesses come up with some creative ideas.
Yeah, it's an out of the box way of um, approaching or supporting the businesses to do a, a marketing effort. But also, who knows what idea will come out of that, you know, sometimes those, sometimes kids have the best ideas.
Well, I'm going back to, what is, you know, our limit? Our limit is $5,000, that's one thing, but $5,000 for each idea that's chosen, you know, that.
No, I think Jonathan's saying, we'll put in $5,000 no matter how they award it out. Whatever that committee comes up with that's gonna judge the pitches.
That's the max, that's our max exposure.
Yes.
That's my question.
Yes. And it could be if you're, that may be a requirement of the pitch too, is you have a, you tell us what your budget is for this idea. And if it's 20,000, well, that's probably not gonna get invested in because we have 10 total to work with, right?
Right, well, that's one answer.
Clarity on the rules is what you want.
Any chance, this week, go back to CRC and let CRC put in the 10,000?
No.
I mean.
I see if we got a lengthy discussion about it and wanted, wanted the town also to have some.
And in fact, I mean, the exact motion, like you said last night, was to match whatever council would do up to 5,000, so. They wanted it to be both.
I think it's a small investment. Uh, Sally, any input?
I think that it's a, a good idea and that we should move forward with it.
Okay. Um, any motions to that effect?
This is Sally, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay, is the motion to uh, invest $5,000 in the pitch night, Sally?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right.
On the up to $5,000.
Okay. Roll call.
Can I have a question on the motion that there's?
Yes.
People talking and adding to, so what exactly is the motion? Motion to invest 5,000 in the pitch night or not to $5,000?
Sally, did you hear that?
Well, the motion is for the town to approve 5,000. The CRC approved 5,000 last night, so that would be a total of 10,000 as a max for.
On this end that you probably didn't hear.
Yeah, Bill said up to 5,000, meaning he wants to know the results of the pitch night. You're saying, I'm motioning that we put in $5,000 for the pitch night.
Right.
Clarify, CRC.
You know, I have, if it, if it's less than that, then it's less than that, um, that ends up getting pitched. But um, if, if it goes to 5,000 as total, then that would be up to 5,000.
Okay.
I mean, it's half a dozen or six, whichever you want to call it.
Either way, whatever the total coming out of pitch night is, it's split between CRC and Town Council up to 5,000 each. Does that make it? Okay. Okay. Karen, a minute to type all that.
I'm just gonna listen to it.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mr. Givens.
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe.
Aye.
Mr. Tardy.
Aye.
Mr. West.
Aye.
All in favor. I'm sorry, four in favor of one against.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
I think we're back to you. All right, we'll move on to department head reports. Do we have a report from Jeff tonight for EMS?
Uh, no. Oh, I guess I want to say is Merry Christmas to all of you. I appreciate uh, your patience with me for these last four months and I also appreciate your, your vote of confidence tonight with the uh, requests that I made in the work session we went through. And I look forward to 2021 being a, a better year for Culver EMS and moving us into a, a better direction and a, a leader within the community. So thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, fire department, anyone on the line from the fire department? All right, I know uh, fire's not on, but I, I do want to publicly thank Ken Vanapuddy, who's officially retiring from the fire department, as well as some other roles in his life. And uh, he served a good long time for the town of Culver and we appreciate everything that he, he did as both a firefighter, volunteer and fire chief here in his last year on the service. Uh, so if you all see Ken, give him a big pat on the back or an elbow instead of a handshake in this COVID world. Uh, next, we'll go on to police department, Wayne.
I just have a couple things. Just got a meeting to go. There's a really, really online, very, it's happening. Coming to any of ours in 19. You definitely want, you said, we're, this is the plan. Those are the ten, like, you can do not the, you know, of reality. It's not going, in the first few sessions, depending on the, yeah, I think. Uh, which is, it's all the other class and lots of early work. Two or three days, you know, you can bank that credit and, and, and grow from here.
Right. Any, any questions or comments on that?
For Sally, I don't think.
Sally, Wayne's just referring to uh, the economy moving to online sessions now, unless that changes once again.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I really couldn't understand a word he said.
He said they start January 19. He said they start January 19th online and then in person.
Probably need to get on mic.
One other thing we're going to talk a while back. We're going to cover stuff. This is the first time we've accepted the weapon. It just tends to swap some ammo. And because this is $4,000 of ammo, then the buyer is still going to... This don't work with what we have. The council, we want to purchase it, the town, the law.
Okay, where the officers might want to purchase some of it? Okay. Is that okay? Council, any questions about that or comments?
Your ass is going. We have luckily just shot up something around $1,000 of ammunition we had purchased, I think, somewhere around four years ago. But we use it for part-time people. People that have different weapons. But it doesn't work with ours. There's a channel that the harvest company will carry this out of ammunition. And, you know, the setting there, I mean, we'd be willing to pay for it. The towns aren't losing any money. We pay for what we pay for.
He's asking if we have any issue with him or another officer purchasing the old ammo that's no longer of use to the towns.
We were adverse for what it costs the towns.
Yeah.
Emotively disposed of unused inventory or assets or...
Yes.
I would, I would say move that the council authorizes the disposal of unneeded ammunition to its department, who admitted to be sold to the police department at the market rate.
Is there a second?
Market rate or cost? Cost.
Okay. Did you catch all of that, Sally?
Yes.
Okay, great. Roll call.
Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Tardy?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
All in favor?
Well, I have Merry Christmas. Appreciate you.
All right, thank you, Wayne. Merry Christmas to you too.
Merry Christmas.
Is Amber on for the Park Department tonight? No, okay. Utilities, I think you covered, but is Bob on? All right. Boards and Commissions, is anyone on for BZA or the Plan Commission?
Just for BZA, at least here, we did have Jim attend the last meeting. And I checked with Dan Adams. I would guess they'll probably request your presence again at January, Jim, if you want to mark your calendar for the Thursday.
Yeah, that's fine. What day is that?
3/11, State Street. I think I've given you guys an email update on it. They're going to rehear that in January 21st, Jim.
Yeah, great. And I, Jonathan, so you know, I'm going to do a little report on that to you. And will you share BZA after I complete that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Jonathan, does that retain the house over here?
Yeah, it's the one you were at the full year.
All right. Um, we'll move on to Redevelopment Commission report.
The Redevelopment Commission is that we have changed the meeting for our January meeting. The third Monday in January is a public holiday for the Martin Luther King Birthday recognition. And since town employees have that day off, and one of them has a minimum day off, we've all commissioned a weekend with January 5:00 PM. And again, it will be a meeting.
Anyone from the Tree Commission? All right, we'll go on to Clerk's report with Karen.
I have three claims over 2,000 for your approval. The first one is BNB paving for $466,957.75, and that's for the stormwater and the paving project that took place. The second one, I said was Mosaic, but it's actually Michigan Contracting for $5,000, and that's the beach lodge retention seller project. And the final one is Union for $15,000, and that is the proceeds from the tire truck sale that they get half of.
Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevinger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Tardy?
Aye.
Mr. West?
Aye.
All in favor? Just a reminder that there are five seats on the Redevelopment Commission open, only because those seats are, it's a year-long appointment. And there's also two seats on the Tree Commission open, and that's for a three-year appointment. Applications were circulated at Town Road Lake on Facebook and website. The deadline to submit is January 8th. And applicants, just as a reminder, applicants for both commissions, unless they're town residents, but there's no party affiliation requirement. Have any questions? Let me know. Just to put information, I received an email from our representative at TCU, and they made a donation to the United Way on the town's behalf in support of the Culver and Patriot. So I wanted to thank them for that. I need a motion to exempt the bonds for the clerk, the deputy clerk, and the clerk superintendent, which I have those here. Once they're approved, then I will file them with the Clerk's office.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Tardy? Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Tardy?
Aye.
Drew West?
Aye.
And so just a question, I put together compensation reports for those full-time employees, just showing them how much their benefit package is, the health insurance, what it costs the town, what it costs them. So those will go out in paychecks, which will be distributed tomorrow. Technically paid is on the, on the 25th, but they're in the big separate, so we're doing it early. We are also sending out letters to utility customers who are in arrears and be up for shut-off. We, there's no moratorium on shut-offs, but we did communicate with people, being able to run down the queue that they may shut off. So when you're available, find that or at least communicate with us instead of a payment plan. We'll send out off card renewal letters in the mail. This is the question. It's about the holiday of January, so we don't have to pay the January premiums for our, for health insurance for our employees and either for the employees. So the employees get an extra 50 bucks or actually $25 each of their paychecks in January if they have dependents. Unfortunately, if there's no dependents, they get an extra eight cents. So, but they're only paying $1, so.
So is that, did they do that last year?
No, this is the first time they've ever done it. And mainly because of just everything with COVID. They, the insurance industry wasn't seeing as many claims. And so there's a little bit of a cushion. And so they wanted to pass the law to their customers. So that's, and it's just on behalf of the trust of the United Healthcare. It's just the medical trust to do so.
I think you had heard about it a while ago and told us a couple of months ago.
Yes.
Maybe a budget time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I felt like you brought that up.
They have got a letter possibly.
I'm just curious why they raised the rates if they had a good year.
I mean, you still have to pay your bills, but, you know, I think so. And then just a reminder, I reminded you last time, just have a water rate, water and sewer rate proposal maker. So if you want to, if you want to have that. And just wanted to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a blessed New Year.
Yeah, I think let's maybe agenda the water rate, sewer rate study for January. I know we haven't really delved into that. It might take a work session or something, but I think we can put it off a little bit just based on our agreement with East Corp. And I don't know how long we can do that, but we definitely need to take a look at it.
It's, it's been five.
Yeah.
Five years, so.
Karen's question on the, the applications for the commissions. Karen Schuman had raised a question on whether she needs to apply since that appointment is, I don't know. You need an application for Karen.
Well, actually, because I don't know that her appointment is technically made by the council. I believe that her appointment is made by the school board. It technically is supposed to be a school board member appointed by the school board. But because of the, for a long time, there weren't any school board members that were interested in serving. So we changed up our bylaws so that she could serve. So it's really, I think that's a question for the school board.
I thought it had to be ratified by, by the council.
I think that one is just school board, if I remember correctly.
It is.
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
I was going to say, I don't recall ever doing it, but everything's a blur after so long. All right. Anything else, Karen? All right, thank you. Attorney?
Uh, yes. The sheriff's sale on 415 Lakeshore is scheduled for January 26th. I reported that previously at 1 o'clock at the Marshall County Jail lobby. The thing, I think I reported as well, 614 College Avenue is also for sheriff's sale on January 26th at the same location. First Federal Bank is, has foreclosed on a loan and, and 614 was used as collateral. As previously reported, one of the requirements for a sheriff's sale is to pay the county real estate taxes. And in that amount for the 614 College Avenue or the town's liens on that property, if you will recall, there's money there. And First Federal's requirement paid the taxes. We don't get our money until a distribution is made by the county treasurer, which I think Karen is going to be end of May, 1st of June, 2021. But the treasurer now has the town's money, and so that'll be forthcoming at some point. And other than that, I don't really have anything other to report, other than what I've interjected earlier.
Thank you, Jim. Is anyone on the line for utility shut-off or ordinance violation? All right, we'll move to citizen input, starting with citizens in the room. He is raising her hand.
Are you going to make the 12th January or...
Usually the first meeting in January. A few years we've had, sometimes it gets to the second one if there aren't enough or something comes up that justifies doing it at the second meeting. Usually the first meeting of the year, you reorganize the council and you have nominees for president, vice president of the council, and then you go into appointments. Some of those appointments are the whole council and some are your president, vice president.
I think I gave it as we appoint people to CRC. It's distributed to every member of CRC. And since all of CRC is up for appointment, I just wanted to share some specific quotes from this handbook because I think they're vitally important. And I'd like to just have a fresh hand line as you are making appointments to CRC. The first one is a quote from page 10, I think in the 2020 version of this handbook. It might be on page 12 of the 2017 handbook. And it covers conflicts of interest. The quote is, "The general provisions of Indiana criminal law relating to conflicts of interest also apply to members of redevelopment commissions." Any caring, if you want me to take this off? "This rule against conflicts of interest is broader than most statutes that govern conflicts of interest. For a redevelopment commission, a member must, in effect, never do any business at all with a redevelopment commission, which disclosure and abstaining from voting will not cure. Accordingly, when deciding whom to appoint to serve as a member of a redevelopment commission, persons who might want to sell property to or buy property from the redevelopment commission or do other business with the redevelopment commission should be avoided. During this year, we had two members of CRC, Rich West and Sue McIntyre, consistently tried to do business with CRC and vote themselves tens of thousands of dollars from CRC to develop Culver, where they are also board members. And in the most egregious example, it was a $105,000 non-cancelable budget. And I was at the meetings where this budget was discussed and honestly was appalled by the lack of transparency and the lack of honesty and the lack of ethics. I notified the town council about this behavior about seven months ago. And as an entity, you had no reaction. And you guys may or may not be aware that the public did have a reaction. And the local paper did a story about Rich West and his particular perspective on ethics and conflicts of interest. And was specifically asked by the paper if he thought it was a conflict of interest to do business with CRC and vote himself money. He said, quote, "I believe quite the opposite is true." And then he went on to state that members of CRC, members of the town council, and strangely, members of the Plan Commission should vote themselves, quote, "money and other benefit to any company or board or nonprofit that they might be part of." He publicly espoused and embraced behavior that is defined in this handbook as criminal or as unethical. And nobody here said anything. Nobody picked up the phone and called the paper and said, "This is not who we are. We don't get on these boards to vote ourselves cash." You guys may or may not have noticed if you've read this handbook that the CRC positions are at-will positions. So just a couple of pages after the quote I just read you, is this quote. "The appointing person or body may remove its appointee at will and without cause. And I believe you have tremendous cause to immediately remove both Rich West and Sue McIntyre." And I think if you appoint, reappoint either one of them to CRC, you've taken yourselves and every honest, ethical board member who serves here in Culver. It's not enough of them to resign their other board positions. That would be window dressing at this point. If they're ethical people, they would resign those positions months ago, and they would have done so voluntarily. To do it now would be because they are caught. They've shown who they are. Rich West put his beliefs in black and white and in the local newspaper. He has told you how he is going to act. You guys talk about volunteer fatigue. And I became a new volunteer here in Culver when I got here four years ago. And I've tried to be helpful and involved. And the ideas of developing a true economic development strategy and of exploring becoming an independent municipal power to tell you... and of exploring becoming an independent municipal power to tell you were my ideas, came from my husband through to CRC. I can tell you from this volunteer standpoint how fatiguing it was to watch Rich West, Sue McIntyre, and their colleagues on Develop Culver twist that economic development idea into an illegal and unethical $105,000 non-cancelable budget for Develop Culver. Both Rich West and Sue McIntyre knew they are prohibited from doing business with CRC. But as Rich told the newspaper, he thinks differently. And my sense, watching them at that time, was that nothing mattered to you guys. And that is fatiguing as well. You wonder why people don't volunteer. After what has happened on CRC this year that has been completely ignored, I wonder why people do volunteer. I just want to tell you guys, I am not going away on this. For me, criminal behavior, unethical behavior on our boards is absolutely unacceptable. And I just hope that it's unacceptable to all of you as well. And I have a copy of the article that appeared in the paper, and I can give a copy to each of them.
All right. Other citizen input?
This is Russ. May we have that lady's name again, please?
Yes, it's Lee Marshall.
Oh, boo, I didn't recognize you. I'm sorry. Okay.
Any other citizen input? I'll go to council issues. Bill Clevenger?
Merry Christmas to all.
Bill Giffens?
Happy New Year to all.
Rich? Sally, are you still with us online?
In spirit and online. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year.
All right. Thank you, Sally. Typically, we have a, a town employee get-together, and obviously, we did not do that this year with COVID. But whenever we do have that get-together, it's a nice time to reflect on the year and thank all of our employees and Karen and Jonathan for their leadership in, in directing our employees. Considering 2020 was a pretty crappy year in general, I think the fact that we got through it and landed where we're at now, for the most part, with everyone healthy and surviving the year, I just want to express my gratitude to all of the employees, as well as the town council, as well as Karen and Jonathan, for sticking it out, sticking together to get through some pretty difficult ups and downs. I had some of those in my own personal life with the loss of my father. And I just wish we had an opportunity to get together so we could appropriately thank all of these people. So, I hope each of you will take some time to do that in the next week and, and relay to the employees at the virtual get-together how incredibly grateful we are for the patience, the work ethic, and everything they do to make Culver the special place that Culver is, as well as the residents who have supported us through this year. I think we can all agree that it's been a rough one, but this community comes together during rough times, and they did for, for this year. So, hopefully, everyone will remain safe through the holidays and come back healthy in January and be ready to go and continue on with the hard work. I just wanted to put that out there. Anything else from Karen or Jonathan or council? All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn to claims.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mr. Giffens?
Aye.
Mrs. Monroe?
Aye.
Mr. Charlie?
Aye.
Wes?
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Good night.
Merry Christmas.